What do you have in mind for your stretch time?
You repeat this one, but the mics already, mics are ready. Oh, it's supposed to be open public meeting statement?
Yes.
Yes, hi. Um, this council meeting is called to order in the act of ordinance with open public meeting law. This meeting of June twentieth was included in a list of meetings published in the current news in Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting was also placed on a bulletin board at Barrow Hall. In addition, a copy of this notice available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Roll call, Mayor Dennis Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember is Granville Brady?
Here.
Tom Mitchell?
Here.
Gina Stravick?
Here.
Roger Bune?
Here.
Fred Weed?
Here.
Randy Pitts?
Here.
Please join me in the class meeting, your next step. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands on a nation undergone, invincible, with the taking justice for all. Too often it seems we open our public meetings by recognizing individuals who have passed recently that have contributed to our town in no small part. And this week is no exception. I'd like to take a moment of silence for two members of our business community who had different types of businesses with different types of focus and different clientele, but in their own way contributed to the fabric of Somerville. Donna Camerani, owner of the Skyview Taxi. I would say most people that have been in Somerville for any length of time have been in the Skyview Taxi at least once. Just a really hardworking lady, neighbor of mine, and a moment of silence for Donna Camerani. The second individual, Richard Tribe, who was part of the Shrug, Perantoni. And there's a third architect in that firm whose name escapes me right now, but Spennelli, no, Travis Spennelli is Perantoni. Did a lot of work designing projects in and around the borough. And did some work for the school design as well in the past, but a moment of silence for Richard Tribe. Thank you. We have executive session minutes from June sixth, I'll take a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Well, I'm sorry.
Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Here.
Yes. Roger Bune?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Now, we have regular session minutes from June sixth, I'll take a motion on those.
Someone?
Second.
Granville Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Gina Stravick?
Yes.
Roger Bune?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Now, we have a series of departmental reports, election day results, Division of Health report for May. St. Hubert's Ann will show up the report for May, those are on file ahead of Barrow Hall. All right, we'll go around the table with committee reports, we'll start tonight with Mrs. Stravick.
Uh, the Environmental Commission report includes a grant opening to be set up for July of the Community Garden. It is functioning open, and if anyone wants to bet, I think there's three left. Uh, so you can reach me or the Environmental Commission Facebook page. The, uh, Commission is also working on a grant, reforestation grant to, um, replace many of the trees that we lost in Ida. And that's due July eighth, so between Kevin and the members of the committee and myself, we're working on writing that grant and hopefully replacing trees in all the parks as well as along the route.
Thank you, Kevin Brady. Yes, Your Honor, you'll recall with the developer of Somerset, the Somerset Development Complex, which has avalon made faulty agreement pay the initial five years of debt service on the construction of Station Road. The new road will reduce the traffic on Bridge Street and also allow for emergency vehicles access to the development. We budgeted five million dollars for the project and are ready to proceed with building it. At this time, our options for funding are limited due to the high cost of borrowing. So I asked Page to apply for funding through a new program that the county has that will allow, uh, participating municipalities to follow through the Somerset County Improvement Authority. If we're accepted, it does not require the usual five percent down payment. And the interest will be predicated on the number of municipalities to participate. Our alternatives were to fund through grant bonds, which are not attractive to investors, and worked in private funding. With sky high interest rates and the recession economy, this seems to be our best alternative. So I asked that Page to pursue this and we should find out relatively quickly whether or not we're going to accept it. If that doesn't work, then we can probably go through the improvement authority just as a regular customer. The emergency services program facility, we're now at the point where we're going to start looking at the FFNE furniture fixtures and equipment for the project. F T Stonewater has preparing accurate schematics of all the rooms in the building so that we can precisely place furniture, equipment, electronics, everything that needs to be done in its location. We're looking into a company now that would organize the FFNE for us. And Kevin, of course, is our certified purchasing agent, and he and Colin are working on this stage. So the company looked like a good idea, they're actually putting together the whole package. Because again, it's very complicated, it would be two facilities, police and fire. It'd be a good idea to have somebody to take a look at it and spend more time on it than I can. Finally, the word helped, uh, the statistics came out recently. Now, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but ninety-nine percent of our over sixty-five population in Somerville has been vaccinated since COVID. And that's a pretty good record. Somerset County is one of the most compliant of all the counties and is probably one of the healthiest. And, uh, we are here to attest to that. And that's all I have for my report here. Thank you, then. Have a good week.
Yes, thank you. Um, just a few quick items. Uh, we are looking for members for the Youth Services and Municipal Alliance Commission, Social Committee. Uh, it's important, especially this summer, National Night Out will be coming up in August. So if you're interested, you know, please let us know, submit a resume and we'll take a look. And if everything works, we can get you on board. This Thursday, June twenty-third, at six P M. on Division Street is our second annual LGBTQ pride event. It was very fun last year, so please stop on by for that. On June thirtieth, at five P M., uh, there will be ribbon cutting for the newly redone Drew McLaughlin basketball court at Carroll Hadrian Park. Uh, you know, this is very important because, you know, this is in memory of Drew McLaughlin. And I know it'd be the world of the McLaughlin family if everyone came out for that. And finally, I just want to remind everyone, our next meeting is July fifth. Uh, so I will give my yearly Fourth of July sort of warning, please keep the fireworks up to the professionals. Uh, last year was, um, you know, a lot of people were shooting off, shooting them off in their backyards. It's very, especially if it's very hot and dry. Uh, let's give our firefighters the night off. Uh, let's give our emergency services professionals the night off, so no blown up hands, no bad injuries. You know, we have a lot of families in town with young children. Uh, we have veterans with PTSD, so shooting off those fireworks is a real insult to our veterans. Uh, and of course, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't say we have pets too, that will go crazy. So let's please just remember, the fireworks are up to the professionals. Branchburg has professional firework show in Middlesex, you could look online just about anywhere. So let's please leave it up to the professionals and give our emergency services a break tonight. That's all I have.
And there's always the bases fireworks on the channel four.
Yes.
I've been watching them for sixty-five years, it's just an habit.
And you can stay in this year too. Yes.
That's right.
That's all.
Good. Castle Mitchell?
Yes. I just want to call your attention to, uh, when we have a resolution on the agenda for tonight, number two oh seven, accepting a grant of five million dollars for the Hazard Discharge Site Mediation Fund through the E E A and the D E P. This is for the cleanup, for additional cleanup of the landfill in preparation for the forward panel project. And we are proceeding a path toward getting that project done. That's all I have.
Thank you, Tom, I was going to comment on that here during the resolution department, thank you for your comments. Castle Bro.
So the Ad hoc Flood Committee is meeting on Thursday, June twenty-third, here in Council Chambers at six P M. Continuing to take a look at the resolution and I think we have a draft of it that will be available that evening. Uh, so we obviously invite the, the public to come on out in here and weigh in on what we've come up with, what the group, by week, I mean, what the talented group of professionals has come up with. Uh, it, it, go without saying to recognize the students and the families that experienced the moving up ceremonies and the graduating uh, ceremonies that, that occurred this past week. So we had Vanderweer, the students moved up from fifth grade to now they're going to be sixth grade students at the middle school. Our middle school students obviously moved up from eighth to ninth, joining high school. Uh, and we recognize the high school class of twenty twenty-two as they move on to bigger and better things. You know, we wish them all well. It's an exciting time all around, I know there's a lot of happy balloon, happy, happy families and balloons all across the, the borough as well as signs recognizing the students that were either moving up or graduating. So congratulations to all those students and their families and we look forward to great things.
I'd like to congratulate Councilman Bro for getting one child through middle school and two more to go. And, uh, Council President, you have your turn, isn't it?
Yes.
You have a, a moving up fifth grader and you'll be a middle school parent next year, so good luck with that.
Thank you.
All right, man.
Uh, some, uh, Downtown Somerville Alliance news. Uh, the Downtown Somerville Alliance have been hard at work setting the wheels in motion for an exciting spring/summer twenty twenty-two season. The season recently kicked off with the return of Friday cruise nights and Saturday Summer Stage Concert Series. Approaching the fourth week of the season and the talent has been incredible, if you've had a chance to go down and check it out. Last week, the D S A celebrated Juneteenth in connection with the County of Somerset and hosted a Juneteenth themed live painting event coupled with a performance from the legendary Nina Simone's grandson, Alexander Simone, and that was held on Division Street. This Thursday, as Councilman Weed noted, uh, at six P M., uh, the D S A is celebrating Pride Month with Family Pride Night on Division Street partnered with R W J Somerset, the Bab Sipperstein Proud Center, the Transit Farming Alliance, and the Somerset County LGBTQ Advisory Board. As we approach the month of July, their Starlight Cinema movie series kicks off at sundown on Thursday, July seventh with the Disney hit, Encanto, and show two Sundays returned on Sunday, June tenth at two P M. Uh, we invite you to come out and enjoy all the Downtown Somerville experience. And for more information, uh, you can go to the Downtown Somerville Alliance on Facebook, at Downtown Somerville Alliance, on Instagram and TikTok, at Downtown Somerville, or on the web, at downtownsomerville.com. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. I'll add two brief, uh, school related announcements and piggybacking on Mr. Bro's report. I had the pleasure to attend the Somerville High School National Honor Society Induction Service about a month ago, followed by the Middle School Honors, um, induction last week and the two moving up ceremonies that just occurred this past week. I can, I can report to the town that, uh, based on, on the, on the, the quality and, and the, the, the public bearing of the kids that were honored, we're in real good shape here. It's just nice for me to see as, you know, as a, as a retired educator, that, that, you know, the schools continue to, to produce, you know, great students who have not only great resumes and great accomplishments, but, but great hope for the future as well. And I, I look forward to seeing those new middle school students and those new high school students graduate at the end of their programs as well. For the public, with school out now, I'll make my annual plea of reminding you that, you know, school's out, drive safely. Over the next few days, I'll be reaching out through our administrator's office to make another request from D O T to look at reducing the speed limit on Route twenty-eight from the eastern end of town at Adamsville Road to where it currently is at Meadow Street. Right now, the eastern half of the town still has multiple speed limits, whereas the speed limit on Route twenty-eight from Meadow Street west to Cornell Boulevard is a constant twenty-five. I just think it's important, uh, that the eastern half of the town that's serviced by Route twenty-eight, which includes the hospital, the school, um, many medical offices and daycare centers, be treated with the same twenty-five miles per hour. We've made multiple requests, I'm going to make the request again. And in conjunction with that, I'm going to ask the, uh, county of Somerset to once again look at reducing uh, the speed limits on the county roads to twenty-five miles an hour, which would include East Main Street from Adamsville Road to Gaston Avenue. Uh, that is becoming a more heavily trafficked street. People use East Main Street as a bypass to Union Avenue. And it works for them, but it, uh, it does increase the speed. The limit goes from forty-five on the Bridgewater side to thirty-five on the Somerville side. But I'm going to lobby for twenty-five on our side and I, I think I'll reach out to Mayor Mensch and maybe he can request a twenty-five from Findern Avenue all the way. It's just, um, we've been unsuccessful in getting a traffic light at the Adamsville, you know, road intersection. So I think right now we need to revisit the request for twenty-five. In the meantime, we would ask you all to please respect the posted speed limits and even go a mile or two smaller. We've got a lot of kids out, we are a walkable, bikeable community. You know, cars and feet and, and bikes are in constant conflict. And this would ask you to be extra careful over the next few months as we attempt to get those limits posted and enforced. And that's all I have. We have one discussion item tonight and I just very briefly, I'll summarize it and ask anyone else to, to chime in if, if they care to. As part of the regional center with Bridgewater, Raritan, and Somerville, we've been notified that the township of Bridgewater has an application pending before their zoning board of adjustment to put a warehouse project on the old Mack truck site on East, uh, East twenty-two, roughly between Gaston Avenue and I guess Adamsville Road. I don't have all of the details, but it involves the demolition of some existing office buildings and the erection of a warehouse facility similar to an Amazon project. I don't know if it's affiliated with Amazon, but the, the descriptions we saw at the planning office indicated it's, it's not just a small facility, it's several hundred thousand square feet with the concurrent traffic generated by trucks. But more importantly, since the facility is on the east side of Route twenty-two, trucks coming from the west have easy access to the site, they're just out on twenty-two east. They get to the driveway of the new plant as is proposed, and they turn right and they're there. Question arose when we saw the proposal, what about trucks coming from the east? The Port of Newark, the Port of Elizabeth, seems like there'll be more trucks traveling east to west. What do they do to get to the east side of Route twenty-two? They're not going to make a U-turn at the, you know, like that we used to do before the state blows down those U-turns. I think they're going to head down Findern Avenue, turn right on, on twenty-eight, and then they go right on Gaston to get back up to twenty-two. Either that or they'll go somehow around the circle. Or use Bridge Street or Grove Street or Ipanoah, or, you know, they'll, they'll find a way to get back east. Not acceptable from, from our standpoint. So we have Michael looking at it, he's, he's sent a letter to the Bridgewater authorities. It's my understanding that it's originally going to be at the Planning Board jurisdiction, but it was deemed since it's a, a use variance, it will go to their zoning board. And again, I don't have a client table on, so if anyone else has any, you know, additional information on that, I think it's, you know, it's critical that we comment on it from a environmental standpoint, whether it be traffic, emissions, noise, light. There's not a single home, uh, in Bridgewater, I don't believe that's affected. It might be some, a couple of houses on Adamsville Road, but that's really the only residential part of Bridgewater that is anywhere contiguous to this. We have East Main Street, Gaston Avenue, um, Eastern Ave, I mean, you know, there's, there's plenty of potential impact for a warehouse operation. I don't know the hours, I don't know the volume, that will all come out in a testimony. But I think it's important that, um, we as a municipality will chime in. It's too late once it's approved and we have the, you know, the roar of the, of the eighteen wheelers, you know, bowing down, you know, Gaston Avenue at eight fifteen in the morning when kids are walking to Vanderweer School and stuff. Uh, if anyone would like to comment on that, uh, we are preparing a response.
Mayor, I think that you should also add to the response, uh, environmental concerns for flooding because any warehouse going in is going to, um, and this was a discussion with the Environmental Commission when Larry Cleveland brought it to our attention from the Planning Board side, um, it's going to heavily impact, you know, our, our surrounding, especially if it's a huge amount of pavement, which typically those warehouses are. They're, you know, part of the whole New Jersey State D E P, uh, changes to the regulations, which we're waiting on with, with Roger and the, and the advisory committee, uh, I, I think we should be waiting on at any rate. Um, because a, a lot of this is prompted by warehouse development and overdevelopment and, and the flooding that it creates. So I, I think that's a huge issue, I don't know what exactly borders, uh, residentially around there, but whatever it is, it's, it's going to impact in some way. Uh, so to make sure that there's, you know, good environmental practices put in place when that construction, uh, takes place, it should, should it.
Well, the most sensitive building, in my opinion, is Vanderweer School. It's, it's literally diagonally in the back, and even though the building is not close by, it feels, uh, you know, and we, we've seen over the years the pattern there. Vanderweer School never had a retention basin in the front when I first started working here in nineteen seventy-three, but because of the development in Bridgewater, you know, the medical complex is north of twenty-eight, they now have a detention basin, and this, this is going to be a lot of new progress though. So I'll, I'll make sure we add that to our, you know, to our comments.
And, you know, and as you talk about this as well, I, I think we all received a letter from James Sherry Mariki about traffic on Route twenty-two, uh, on Grove Street. And, you know, as you mentioned, trucks cutting through twenty-two into town, um, that, this is another area impacted in many ways by the success of Downtown Somerville. Um, but we have to continue to think about how we can control our own traffic issues, you know, as well um, and, and speeding, um, in neighborhoods that are impacted by the success of Downtown Somerville.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This kind of thing is very much with the, with the other subject that was discussed is the speed limit on, uh, Union Avenue.
Yes.
We can get that Union Avenue speed limit down to twenty-five. That would help to discourage trucks from cutting through that way.
I think it's already twenty-five on Montgomery Road and North Bridge though.
It is on Grove and North Bridge, you can go to.
So, you know, what else can we, can we do, or, you know, do we need to ask police force to be out there more? I don't know.
The concern, the concern that I would have is, is that they, that they would, uh, the, his name was called, as the mayor mentioned before, down, uh, Findern Avenue and across, uh, Union Avenue.
To get around the warehouse, yeah.
To get around the warehouse, because the, the U-turn at, uh, Bridge Street, North Bridge Street U-turn is fairly awkward.
In D O T, I don't think they ever allow that, but it, with D O T, you never know. But I, I agree, it's, yeah, not every truck is going to come from the west. I think it's, it's naive to think that more than twenty percent.
Trucks can take that U-turn, but they're very awkward for the deuce.
One of them flips over and they'll be gridlocked all the way back to Newark, you know, Newark port.
I knew it.
Yeah.
But I think that one of the things that we have to investigate, it was discussed a little bit in our last meeting, would be controlling the roads we control, and that's where we specify weight limits. We control North Gas, we control Gaston Avenue from where it meets twenty-eight all the way down to twenty-two. We can easily make it so that trucks cannot travel down that road.
I have Kevin researching right now what our limitations are on, on, you know, weight limits.
Because I, coming from South Plainfield, the entire interior of South Plainfield is a truck free zone because of the impact that it has on the neighborhoods and the impact that, that it has on the infrastructure. You know, we, we are constantly hearing from our constituents that our roads are in trouble. And if we have these large warehouse tractor trailers coming through our borough and we're going to have to replace these, these roads more often. And if, I, I mean, I can certainly reach out to our, my colleagues in South Plainfield and figure out what they were able to and how they, how they did it. But the entire interior of South Plainfield is a truck free zone. You could not drive a tractor trailer through the interior past what, you know, each school and everything else because of that. Obviously, we don't control the state roads and the county roads, but we can certainly look into how we can protect our, uh, our residents from, as we talked about before, the sound, the, uh, as well as the emissions and the damage to our roads.
I'll, I'll, because I have Kevin working on, on, you know, research now as to what, what road, you know, what we can do. There must be some restriction in terms of, we have to have a qualified reason to do a restriction, this certainly, I think, would qualify. But I will mention that. And what else?
Yeah, um, a couple of things. First of all, when the board of adjustment meets in Bridgewater, we need to, and then get together en masse to begin that meeting. Bridge Street, Adamsville Road is already waitlisted, so we can't have a truck going down Adamsville Road from Route twenty-eight to Route twenty-two. They were smart enough to do that, I believe we can do that without any problem whatsoever. There are at least six roads that intersect Route twenty-two from Mountain Avenue all the way to, to Gaston. Certainly Gaston is a major concern. The other problem, as I see it, is the, it wasn't a courtesy that, uh, they notified us. We are within two hundred feet of the proposed construction and that Vanderweer School, so. And that brings me to the final point that we are part of something euphemistically called a regional center partnership. We have been part of this group for many years now. I think it is very, it is time to be a very close look at what the value of that is. I thought from the very beginning it had no value. I believe it has very little value to the borough of Somerville. And to be honest with you, we get nothing from this regional center partnership. And I'm glad Colin and Kevin aren't here because they'll argue a point. I think the point has to be very, very clear, we're getting nothing other than aggravation. These truck warehouses are not a nine to five operation. One in Monroe, it's twenty-four seven, okay? Any, I, anybody tells you, well, it's only going to be certain hours, is nonsense. There's no reason why these trucks have to come up Union Avenue, go past Adamsville School, Vanderweer School, and through the neighborhood where Schoolhouse Road is to get to that east, that, that eastern section of the warehouse. That's the only really good way they'll do it. The other point is anything coming from the south to the north will likely want to take Bridge Street. Now, first of all, they may not get under the railroad vessel. And secondly, Bridge Street is pretty, pretty crowded, so they can come up Bridge Street, go all the way to twenty-two. Not on my back, I think. So I like Roger's idea of looking at the whole town, except for local deliveries, as a truck free zone. And then tell our partners on the regional center, Somerville's off limits. a truck-free zone, and then tell our partners on the regional center, Somerville's off-limits to your trucks.
If you build it, you have to find another way.
Because I fully expect there'll be some pushback here. I don't think it's going to simply be a matter of our regional center partners are going to say, well, that's fine, we'll do it anyway.
I have a few words.
Yes, go ahead.
First of all, everything that has been said, taking the words right out of my mouth. So, you know, we, I'm glad we're looking at the whole town, because you also don't want truckers getting confused and going down Route twenty-eight, oh, well, let me make a left on the twenty-eighth, and let me make a right on the Main Street, follow the state road. So, you know, that's something we certainly should talk to our state representative, state DOT, although I don't have, never have my hopes for that. So, you know, let's think about it. I have about twenty, twenty-five years of experience in that neighborhood by Vanderweer. I could always tell, looking out the back window, growing up, when there was an accident on the highway, because twenty-eight was jam-packed, and people would try to speed through Roosevelt, Schoolhouse, Fieldstone to try and get her down. So, you know, and also with the flooding, for those who don't know the history of it, that area of town used to be like Meadows. So there's already water retention problems for a lot of residents on Fieldstone, Nagels, Schoolhouse, even across the streets, some of the car streets, the same deal. So, you know, we don't want more water coming in for those residents. So I, you know, I'm just fully on board, and thank you for everyone taking, seems like long reading.
I'll get an update tomorrow from Kevin and Michael Paul, and see what the next steps will be.
We have Planning Board on White Street, I guess.
Is there anything discussed in that? I don't know the Bridge Water's calendar yet, because I don't know if the application's been deemed complete until it is. They can't schedule a public hearing, but I know we have to assist, they have a traffic study and environmental study, and I don't, you know, I, flood mitigation study.
They also have to go through the county planning board, of course, the chair happens to be the chair of our planning board. It's a good idea to keep that in the books as well.
And you said this would be a court adjustment?
It originally was supposed to go through their planning board, but I understand now that because of the use, I believe, of C-variants, which triggers a self-water adjustment here, planning board would not have jurisdiction over this, which, which involves passing anything where it's on a planning board, while it's a simple majority. So, I mean, but that's, you know, that's not, that's not considered a victory. There's plenty of work to do, and as Dr. Brady mentioned, that meeting has to be very well attended, not by professionals, but by, you know, all of us that are going to be affected. We're only two square miles, you know, and the convoy of trucks has been affected.
So we should make sure that we get notification out to the community, especially the residents in that area, asking them to make appearances.
I'll see if we can get more information on the modified table. Thank you. All right, we are at our open public meeting. Of course, I'll entertain a motion to open.
So move.
Second. Your call?
Grandville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravik.
Yes.
Roger Goon.
Yes.
Fred Lee.
Yes.
Randy Fitz.
Yes.
Public session is open. All public comments should be addressed to myself. It's a five-minute, five-minute time limit for speaker, and speakers may only speak once with no unused time yielded to a subsequent speaker. Public is invited to approach, identify yourself, and address your comment or question to myself.
I am the public. Mr. Mayor, Victor Garcia, one seventy-one Mercer Street. To piggyback off of the conversation of the warehouse, I really like what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Mayor, from the town council, in terms of the level of prudence that is being given to the project. I would just add that, you know, we have to balance certain economic interests, right, which is that a lot of these warehouses do bring good-paying jobs to the area, and with a lot of talks about recession looming and office buildings not being filled up because of COVID, we, as a town, should also welcome businesses and new development. I don't know if a warehouse is the answer. I'm concerned, as many of you are, and as you are, Mr. Mayor, by environmental impact and, of course, by the traffic impact, and I think that if the project were moved forward, we as a town should look to see to what extent we can limit our roads to the trucks. And I think it's a brilliant idea that the council member had brought up, to see what roads we can control in our two-point-two square miles. I would also echo and piggyback off of the comment that you made, Mr. Mayor, which is that I believe that most of our roads, if not all of our roads, should be limited to twenty-five miles per hour, simply because it's a small town with many people and who we encourage to walk and to bike, and for purposes of safety, it doesn't make sense to have big trucks coming in and out and going near schools. I'm not so sure if I would agree with a sentiment expressed by a council member to withdraw or to step away from any regional partnership. I think that an alliance is always better, and of course, the town of Somerville is much better if we can cooperate, but I would encourage us as a town to go and step forward to the town council meeting in Bridge Water or to the body that's going to be addressing this, and certainly notify the residents that might be impacted, would be beneficial. But, you know, a warehouse in that area, and such a congested part of the state, I'm not so sure if I'm convinced, but it should be also balanced with the fact that we do need really good-paying jobs in this area, and warehouses are currently the business of the day, if you will. Everyone's buying things offline, and they can provide good-paying jobs, and so we don't want to miss out on that opportunity either. Other comments that I'd like to make are concerning the part of the town that I live, which is near the, we're in the Brookside Apartments. Just three areas I'd like to focus on. A few council meetings ago, I brought up the issue of the basketball court on Mercer Street, which was destroyed during Hurricane Ida. I'd like to know if the town has any update in terms of the progress. I know that the basketball court at the Carroll Major Complex was newly paved and done, and it's absolutely beautiful, but that other part of town on Mercer Street would also like to benefit from a new basketball court. It's very much a disrepair, again, very much dangerous for anyone that's on it, and I understand that there's a certain balancing act between letting students or residents use it and also not wanting to close it, but I would suggest perhaps putting more pressure on whatever insurance entity it is that is going to be financing or payroll or financing the project, excuse me, to see if it could be expensed, especially now that it's the summer season. Item number two goes along again with the speed limit. A few council meetings ago, I addressed the concern that I have about cars coming quickly off of Route twenty-two and down Mercer Street in particular, that's the street that I live on, and I think that it happens on all of the streets that come off of Route twenty-two. Many cars are coming in very fast, and I don't know what can be done, but I would encourage greater signage, more emphasis on police presence, perhaps a greater, you know, more funding for, you know, street signs that are more lit up or for stop signs in the area. I'm not sure, but the cars that come off of Route twenty-two come in very fast. It is the summer season, but I don't want it to be school season and we have a student get hit by a car. Unfortunately, a lot of times what we tend to see in many political circles is that, you know, we react to things once an accident happens. We can absolutely prevent it. We know that it's an issue, we've heard it here, it's been echoed many times. I'd like to see what this town can do, and I'm sure that there are many solutions. I think at one point it was discussed to put some type of speed bumps or something on the road, which weren't, which isn't too cost prohibitive, and I'd like to see that maybe move forward to be explored a little bit further. Lastly, in that part of town, again, where I live, there is a little park, John Wall Memorial Park, I believe. It's another great park, but I'd like to perhaps see a few more safety measures perhaps put in place. It tends to get very dark at night. It is rather shaded from the main road. There is graffiti on the bridge, and this morning, as I was walking my dog, I found a bottle of liquor and cigarette wrappers and lighters strung across near the playground, and I don't think that's a, I wouldn't want children to be near that, right, or to invite any type of behavior that can be hidden or obscured by the darkness of that part of the night. I encourage people to enjoy our parks, and, you know, they're a great space to be in, but perhaps maybe just having more encouraging and welcoming signs, reminders, or notices would be beneficial. Definitely, you know, more police activity can always benefit, maybe not patrol units, but perhaps the police units that are on bikes or if they walk from town. It's always good to have that type of community interaction with the police, and I believe that it can foster definitely good relations. And lastly, it's a topic that I talk about often, but I'd like to remind the town council again that it's an important topic, the issue of high rent, and the reason I bring it up again is because as a nation, we are seeing some of the warning signs of recession looming. Whether or not that's going to happen, I don't know, who knows, right? But we don't, as a town, need to wait for things to get into a bad position in order to be able to respond to some of the high prices, and I wonder if as a town, if we're able to take any step to control some of the rent prices, whether it is putting a limit on the amount of that rent increase per year or any other creative solution, but again, we don't have to wait until the economy is bad for people to say, I'm struggling to pay my rent to twenty-eight hundred dollars for a two-bedroom apartment. Things are great right now, things are lively, but we all seem to prepare for perhaps stormier days ahead, and it's better to do it preventively rather than reaction, than reacting to it, excuse me. So again, I would encourage this town council, Mr. Mayor, and your mayor allies, to please explore further options, as it is a concern. And my final comment is.
Ten seconds, Mr. Mayor.
There is a committee that I believe is supposed to be on the Brookside Park, that its future in response to the flood. I'd just like to know the name of that committee and how long you can get on it. It seems to be a very difficult to name, that's a big point, how to get on it, and that came out in another meeting that I was in involving other town members, so I'd just like more clarity on that and better information to public.
Please, Mr. Brady.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We are still in the open session, so.
Thank you. I'm Chris Cover, sixty-four, Mount Attic. And first, I want to say thank you, everybody, for serving on the Borough Council. I'm at the luxury of sitting at home, watching this on YouTube, and decided I want to decline any comments here.
You've doubled the public attendance, Mr. Covers, or your role in the public.
Okay, but, and I don't mean this comment in any way in criticism, but I'm very much concerned about what I hear about the rising costs of the FW Stonewater project to build a new municipal complex. And I don't have an opinion whether it's getting too expensive, I don't know the numbers, but interest rates have risen substantially, and we're already locked in for our funding costs for five years or whatever, and then the cost of cement, everything else goes way out. Like, there's nothing wrong with stepping back and delaying the project or reconsidering it. It's uncomfortable for the town if we don't have the new facility for obvious reasons, but if the project costs thirty-one million dollars, and the financing costs have risen by three percent a year, that's nine-hundred thousand dollars per year, and it completely blows out our projections on the financing of the project. I'm not here to tell you what to do, I don't know what the right thing to do is, but my experience with business and investing, sometimes it makes sense to have some courage to revisit where we are and not feel overly committed to do something, which is, thank you.
Thank you. I would throw an option. We want to talk about the meeting. Okay, after the meeting. Okay. All right, hearing no other public comment, I'll take a motion to close.
So move.
Second. Grandville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravik.
Yes.
Roger Goon.
Yes.
Fred Lee.
Yes.
Sandy Fitz.
All right, public session is closed, and we're at the set resolution part. Are any of the council would like to have both per individual question? Well, I have two of seven.
Yes, I have one ninety-six, please.
And I have two additional walk-ons. Now, I'm sorry, is that all?
Yes.
Okay, anyone else? I have two additional resolutions. Resolution two oh nine, which is the hiring of Sarah Deason, a certified lifeguard at seventeen dollars an hour, and then twenty is the hiring of Jacob Anderson, Jacob Anderson, again, is a certified lifeguard for seventeen dollars an hour, so I'll move up those on.
Were these given? I have, I have not seen, I don't know, any of the other council members have even seen these or notified of these walk-ons.
I think I did check that. This just came through today.
Yeah, I would, we didn't get a single email about that. When I was walking out the door, the email came through, so that's why I just walked in here. If you can't go walk on, and we can just put it on.
If you're on the table, you can. They're simply hiring lifeguards, so you can choose to vote in or not.
It's already somewhere along here.
I think it's a timing issue, because pools will be opening before our next meeting.
And these, both of these went through the proper hiring, proper committee and all that?
They are both certified lifeguards, and they've had their disputes, yes.
Okay, and the.
This came from our recreation.
Recreation and.
Yes. I'm going to eat life, but.
All right, great.
All right, so I'll summarize the ones that will go down as a group. One eighty-six, authorizing an application for NJUCF stewardship grants for reforestation planning. One eighty-seven, authorizing our tax collector to complete electronic tax sale process for the current year. One eighty-eight, approving Chapter one fifty-nine of the State of New Jersey Clean Communities Grant. One eighty-nine, approving annual renewal of amusement and video game licenses for the current year. One ninety, approving annual renewal of wrecker and towing licenses for the current year. One ninety-one, approving annual renewal of taxi owner licenses for the current year. One ninety-two, approving annual renewal of taxi driver licenses for the current year. One ninety-three, approving alcohol beverage licenses to be submitted to the Division of Alcohol Beverages and Trent for approval. One ninety-four is approving a tax overpayment for one ten North Bridge Street. One ninety-five, authorizing a non-fare open contract to jobs for Blue, the coordination of law duty employment of police officers. One ninety-seven, accepting the resignation of Doug Greber from the Municipal Alliance and the Services Commission. One ninety-eight, approving Jill Gleason to fill that vacancy. One ninety-nine, authorizing the execution of the lease purchase agreement with Ford Motor Company, the lease of two police interceptors. Two hundred, authorizing administration entering agreement with Spiegel as LLC for a telecommunications audit. Two oh one, accepting the resignation of Jukri S. Lujan effective July sixth. Two oh two, approving Gabriel Corbin to be hired as a lifeguard at seventeen dollars an hour. Two oh three, approving Anna Decoe to be hired as a lifeguard at seventeen dollars per hour. Two oh four, approving Doreen Gerato to be hired as a CPO pool director at one hundred dollars a week. Two oh five, accepting the resignation of Alcovio Angelosi effective immediately July tenth.
June tenth.
June tenth, I'm sorry. Two oh six, authorizing a shared service agreement for the milling, resurfacing and restrepping the Central Avenue from Longshire Street West to Peters Brook. Two oh eight, approving Kevin Gant to be hired as a seasonal laborer at an hourly rate of seventeen dollars per hour for the public works department. Two oh nine, approving the hiring of Sarah Deason as a certified lifeguard for seventeen dollars an hour, and two ten, approving the hiring of Jacob Anderson as a certified lifeguard for the fee of seventeen dollars per hour. Another motion on those.
So move.
So, Mr. Brady, second.
Grandville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravik.
Yes.
Roger Goon.
Yes.
Fred Lee.
Yes.
Randy Fitz.
Yes.
All right, one ninety-six, dedication by rider for our Somerville, Somerset County, requesting permission for the dedication by rider for revenues derived from the abandoned property maintenance emergency demolition fund.
So move.
Second.
Tom, you had a question about this. It's not, it's not clear to me, anyway, what abandoned property is being purchased.
Get a little bit of detail on it. Tom, Jesse, Kevin's been hearing answers to the specifics. You're correct, and it doesn't specify the specific project. It could be there's a surplus in the account, but I can't answer the specifics, so.
Well, in that case, that would move to table.
And your motions to table.
Do you need to know the property that's going to be demolished? Does it make a difference if it's abandoned and they follow the procedures to abandon the property?
Right.
Does it make a difference?
Council would request.
Of course, it's your prerogative.
And the motion would pass or fail on its own merit, so, Tom, you're amending your motion.
Let me ask first.
Wait, wait, we need a motion before we can discuss that. So did you motion to table? Your original motion was to accept.
Yes.
I'm going to take it, you motion to table.
And you accepted.
I will accept.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor for discussing. All right, so we have a motion on the floor for discussion to table, Tom.
Yes. Perhaps Jeremy can, can dissuade my concerns with a bit of legal explanation of what is in fact being done here, if it turns out this is just a routine paperwork, not it.
So we're paying to demolish somebody else's building?
It's an abandoned property, I presume. I'm afraid I'm not familiar with.
What it says is that there's a fund created and so we will use said funds in the, in the event that we have to demolish an abandoned property.
Right.
So that's, that's the creation of a rider, that way, depending upon, and it's going to the Director of the Division of Local Government Services, so that way, it's, it's, depending on what, if we have a situation where the estimates are lower than what is expected than what we actually end up with, we have this fund that we can use to help to demolish these abandoned buildings. We're not talking about a specific property, we're talking about a fund for abandoned properties for us to remediate those things.
That's the way I read it.
So this is, this is setting up a fund for that general purpose?
Correct.
Now, would they have to come to council to use that fund for a specific property or?
No, we administer the fund.
It's, it's.
If we identified abandoned property that we wanted demolished, we now have the funds in place to do so.
The council would, would then say, okay, build a YACs here if abandoned.
The recommendation of the Property Maintenance Department and the administrator.
The Property Maintenance Department wouldn't be able to go off on their own and do building a abandoned.
We, we signed, you folks approved a check and Fred signs, and Fred signs the vouchers, so no money can be expended without approval of this body.
So is this a new fund or it's already in the budget?
This is saying that we have, right now, we have dedicated revenues from current fund appropriations and we're considering them as anticipated revenue and are appropriating for the purpose of demolition or maintenance of abandoned property to which said revenue is dedicated.
So is this a line item in the budget?
That's my interpretation, yeah. Yes, it's dedicated funds, okay. Just to refresh everyone's memory, in the past, if we wanted to take a building and there were a lot of abandoned buildings or houses that were, estates that went on forever and they were falling apart, it would cost us out of pocket about $40,000 to $60,000 to demolish a building, okay. This will enable us to do it without having additional funds expensed. And, and basically, it's a cushion for us because up until now, everything we've had to do, we've had to do essentially out of pocket. This way, we have funds available to do it in case we need to, which makes the town as a whole a better.
Bear in mind as well that the, the cost of the demolition is taxed as a lien against the property.
Yes.
So we don't own the property once we knock it down?
There's a procedure for the municipality to take ownership of a property that's abandoned and presumably they're not paying their taxes, but they're, I don't want to mix the two of them up. The simple answer is that any cost of demolishing a building is taxed to the property.
But it's not a primary, it's not a tax lien basically, it's a lien, it's essentially a mechanic's lien, so we're not pressed to line on that. However, it softens the blow, if something is not being taken care of, like estates that have never been, everybody died and the thing is just sitting there, we can get rid of it without having to go for any special funding. It just makes the town look better, you know? All right, well, we get complaints all the time, that building is in poor shape, what are you doing about it? Well, this is one thing that we can do about it. All right, so we have a motion to table.
That's correct.
We would need to have a vote on that first and if that, and if that, until we finish my train of thought, if that motion passes, then we table this to the next meeting.
That's correct.
If the motion to table fails, we can bring, someone can bring a motion, we adopt.
So a yes vote is to table a motion and a no vote is to not table a motion and then move on to adopt.
Reintroduce, yeah.
Vote and adopt.
Frank, go ahead.
Can't the motion be withdrawn?
Can I, can I withdraw the motion?
Yes.
You don't need to vote on it.
I don't want to, yeah, I'll form a vote, so yes, you can withdraw.
I'll second the withdrawal.
Now, we can, you can reintroduce your original motion.
We should introduce our original motion to pass the motion.
Second, okay. All right, a yes, now, a yes, a yes.
Yes, vote to adopt the motion.
A yes vote, a yes vote needs to.
Yes.
Grandville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Same.
Roger Goom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, just, just, just in general talk, so we're at a little disadvantage because, you know, Kevin's not here tonight, but in the future, if you have, you know, a technical question about a resolution, you know, Xena's very good about getting these two on Thursday before you leave. No, I'm not, I'm not casting any aspersions, but just in general, if you need specific information, you know, to have a more comfortable vote, you know, reach out to the staff on Friday or Monday so that your question, final resolution, this 207, accepting a grant of $5 million and the hazardous discharge cycle mediation fund program through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the Department of Environmental Protection, and a motion.
Throw the vote.
Second, I wanted to pull this, not, not for great discussion, but just to highlight to the public, this is a grant, this is not a loan, this is a grant from the State of New Jersey for the hazardous discharge cycle mediation fund, which is a competitive grant. This is the second or third award dedicated to the landfill. Approximate cost of remediating the landfill is in the range of about $11 million. As the owner and former operator of that landfill, that burden of cleaning it up to DEP satisfaction falls on the bar. And without funds like this, the only other way we have to raise funds is through taxation. This grant eventually will cover about 75% of that total cost. When, when all the funds are received from the State of New Jersey, they'll be approximately $9 million in total. The remainder of the cost of cleaning up the landfill will come from the lease that we will sign with Hathaway once the solar farmers develop. So it's not that we're breaking ground on the landfill tomorrow, but this fund will allow us to continue the remediation according to the, you know, the DEP's schedule. I believe there's one more grant that will, will be applied for before we're complete. But this, I believe up to, up to this point, we've got almost nine of them and I think there's just a little bit more to come. But this is certainly a very positive step, it shows the commitment this state has in the vitality of that site and our desire to put, you know, a clean energy source there. We all know New Jersey seems to have a little bit of a surplus right now, but this, this grant's been in the works for years and it's just gratifying to see that we're now treating the landfill as an asset rather than a liability. And the state is behind us 100% to the, to the tune of an extra $5 million. I don't know what the tax impact would be, I can, I can calculate it, it would be prohibitive. So I'm, I'm just, you know, grateful for the staff's work in putting this grant application together and thank, you know, our representatives in Trent for shepherding it through and can't wait to see that big check.
I also would like to compliment our administrative team, Colin, Kevin and most people who were behind the scenes, because we wouldn't get it if we didn't have really good people out there backing on the doors. You know, Fred knows how good government works and we have, and we did, did well.
And then we've been fortunate over the years in fostering very positive relationships with the dreaded alphabet agencies, you know, the DEP, the DOT, the HT, SRF, you know, we used to cringe when we had to, you know, consult with a state agency. Over the years, we've, we've forged some really, you know, positive partnerships and the proof is in the, is in the number of zeros after, after the dollars though. All right, we will call on this.
Grandville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Goom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Bills and vouchers, Mr. Weed.
Yes, I move in the total of $774,144.68, the payment, uh, payment of bills and vouchers.
I second that. Roll call.
Gina, I'm sorry, Grandville Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Goom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
All right, before I call for adjournment, just a reminder, our next meeting is Tuesday, 5th of July, we will not be meeting on the 4th of July, so it's 15 days from now. And before I ask for an adjournment, I'd like to thank Xena for pitch hitting tonight for, for Kevin.
Thanks for having me.
And we only, we only see your handiwork when the agenda's come out, so I appreciate you coming, you know, stepping forward tonight, taking time away from your family to administer our meeting.
Thank you.
And I thank you for that and we'll, we'll see Kevin in 15 days. With that, I'll call on Mr. Mitchell to go bring us on.
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in 15 days. How was it?
Great, you.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?